This conference will now be recorded.
The public hearing of September 8th, 2020 will now please come to order. Due to this hearing being virtual, council is asking if anyone would like to address council, who is participating through the computer, to please use the chat feature now to let Clerk Maserolo know you have a comment and you will be called on during the comment portion of the meeting. If you are calling on a phone or do not have access to the chat feature, we will give directions during the public comment portion of our meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Bissard?
Present.
Mr. Glassburn?
Here.
Ms. Heeman? Ms. Heeman?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Limpert?
Present.
Mr. Shearman?
Here.
Ms. Williamson?
Here.
Will the clerk please read the issues before council this evening?
Ordinance 2020-78, an ordinance providing for the amendment of Chapter 1115, definitions of the codified ordinances of the city of North Olmsted. Ordinance 2020-79, an ordinance providing for the replacement of Chapter 1163, signs of the codified ordinances of the city of North Olmsted.
Thank you. I want to remind council that this is a public hearing. We are here to listen to the public comments. Council may ask questions and follow up to audience comments, but there will be a committee meeting following this public hearing that would be the place for council to ask more detailed questions. Will Director of Planning and Community Development Lieber please give council and the audience a description of the issue at hand?
Thank you, Madam President. These two ordinances before council tonight will amend our sign code and the companion piece will amend our definitions chapter of our zoning code. It's the culmination of more than a year-long process involving our community, our business stakeholders, and our residents. More than a year at this point because we were delayed a bit due to the pandemic and our efforts to try and wrap up earlier this year. In my opinion, it's a long overdue update. The code was last updated around the year 2000 and much has changed in terms of technology and development and land use patterns in our community and also in the law. And so the city engaged Wendy Moller, who's here tonight from Compass Point Planning, who is an expert in the area of planning, zoning, and particularly in signage. And so I think it appropriate to begin with a presentation where she will outline the basic changes and the impetus for these changes and then that can lead into public comment and later to council discussion. So I believe Wendy has presenter controls and can screen share and I'll have Wendy take it away. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Wendy Moller with Compass Point Planning and I have been working with the city, as Ms. Lieber mentioned, for the last year on the sign code update. And what I'd like to do tonight is just spend a few minutes going through a quick presentation where I can try to hit some of the the high points of the changes and where we focused efforts versus where we we left things as they are and the reasonings behind many of the changes that we've made. And so I will just take a few minutes to go through this process and hopefully it's going to work smoothly as technology is known to. There we go. So the overall purpose of this update was a couple of things, one of which was to just generally revisit the overall code and make sure it does meet with more modern technology and modern times. In particularly, we're going to talk about, on a later slide, about the need to revise the sign code to comply with changes in federal case law. And there was a specific case that was, the Supreme Court came down with in 2015 that impacted sign codes across the nation. And some communities have made changes already, some took some time to process it and so we're all in the process of considering those changes. One of the other big issues was to address some issues with ongoing administrative efforts. And particularly, there have been a number of applications in recent history with multiple variances, particularly for new commercial developments, and also just a request for clarification on various sign types and the calculations of sign areas. Additionally, I was asked to kind of evaluate if there were any other revisions that the community wanted and the stakeholders wanted that could be something that could be involved or incorporated into this update without substantially increasing the amount of signage that might be allowed because generally the community seems fairly happy with the signage overall. So when it comes to the process, the reason why beyond just COVID delaying the adoption, the reason why it took so long is we made a strong effort to reach out to the very stakeholders. So the first thing I did was review all of your existing ordinances. I reviewed a number of variance applications and decisions, made a long discussion with staff and the advisory committee that was made up of a cross-section of interest, including staff. I spent a day, a day and a half, meeting with stakeholders. And so we met with groups like the business owners, we met with real estate and development representatives, I met with residents, I met with sign industry folks and public institutions just to identify what their issues and concerns were. We took all of that information and I developed a sign code audit, which many of you may have read so far, that kind of just looked at the overall issues, what were some of the solutions? And we brought that out back to the stakeholders, back to the steering committee to get direction before we started revisions. Once we had a solid direction, I went through and updated the draft sign code and we met, I met with the advisory committee a number of times to go over those kind of line-by-line edits with the committee and staff. And that led us to adoption and again, we took this, we were prepared to take this to adoption earlier in the year and then were delayed because of COVID. So now we are here at the adoption process. So I told you I'd come back to the big picture legal issue. The court case in 2015 was Reed versus Towns of Gilbert, Arizona. Almost every planner I know is aware of this now. So at the core, it is about content neutrality and it states that communities, as a form of government, can generally not regulate a sign based on the message. For example, you can't, you know, a real estate sign, you only know it's a real estate sign by looking at the message. So how do you, you know, how do you look at a sign and, you know, make a distinction between a real estate sign and a construction sign if they're in the yard and such like that? The Supreme Court said you really shouldn't be, that's not something you should do. Fortunately, North Olmsted, unlike many, many communities, had a very limited number of regulations based on the message. So it wasn't a huge challenge to deal with that. But one of the other issues that comes up and was unclear from that court case was whether or not the communities could still make a distinction between an on-premise sign and an off-premise sign. And most commonly, we refer to off-premise signs as billboards. And then the other one was whether or not you can make a distinction between a commercial sign and then no further distinctions, so a commercial message and a non-commercial one. And a non-commercial message are all your political signs, opinion signs, religious signs, anything related to freedom of speech. So the one thing we decided, based on the sign code audit as well as review with the city's attorney as well as the advisory committee, is we eliminated the on-premise versus off-premise distinction. The reason why is there's not really a need to have it. There's no signs large enough for you to have a traditional billboard. So if we don't reference it, you're not going to have a sign that big. And for the, for pretty much all intents and purposes, McDonald's, if they get 60 square feet or 50 square feet of signs, are not going to give up their signs for somebody off-premise. They're going to keep it for themselves. So we have felt pretty confident of getting rid of that. And actually, I will tell you, there's another court case that's in our district court that applies to us that kind of agrees that you really should not be doing that. So we're already ahead of the game with this update. We did modify the temporary sign regulations to focus on sign type, sign height, and sign location, which has nothing to do with the message. We did maintain a separate category for commercial messaging versus non-commercial messaging because, you know, as we know, we have elections, we have a lot of reasoning to have the various opinions and political signs and so we tried to keep that as the cleanest distinction. I talked about sign types. One of the things that, you know, the city was seeing a lot of variances for was the types of signs allowed. So, you know, a lot of people were asking for drive-through signs, which were essentially ground signs, or driveway entrance signs, which you treated as ground signs. So every time they wanted those different types of signs, they had to ask for variants because they could only have one ground sign. We eliminated the maximum building sign area approach that you currently have now, which has a maximum amount per building unit, a maximum amount per building, and a maximum amount per lot. The problem was that if you change just one of those signs on essentially an existing building, you had to recalculate every one of those ratios and it wasn't leading to any better signage packages. And so we just focused on the maximum amount per unit if there's a multi-tenant space, or the maximum amount for the building on one-tenant buildings. And that streamlines everything, again, without increasing the amount of sign allowed. We did not increase the height of signs allowed or the overall maximum ground sign size. So you, what you essentially see out there as the freestanding signs that you have now are still what is the maximum size allowed. We also did not look to allow pole signs again, which I know long ago the city had changed to not, or to prohibit those and we've maintained that. The one kind of significant change that came out of direction from the community overall was we have allowed for digital signage with very clear and pretty strict limitations. And I'll discuss that a little bit more as we go forward again. So now I'm going to, just for the sake of time, I wanted to focus on some of the key changes we made in various sections just so you have a clue as to, you know, where we try to focus some changes. The first one was on measurements and calculations. Right now, that information is buried in the definitions. We've changed that and incorporated an entire lengthy section in the current or the revised sign code that has a lot of illustrations about how sign areas are calculated. You can see in the corner that we've maintained, you know, the separation so you can determine when multiple elements are part of a single sign area versus if they're spread apart, they would be measured separately. So that should make it a lot more clear and predictable about how much sign area somebody's allowed. On the permanent sign allowance, we, the ratio of one square foot per lineal foot of facade remains, but there's a one, there's only one ratio and it is based on occupancy, which is the building or the building unit. There's no maximum number of signs provided. The total area does not exceed the allowance. So instead of right now where you can only have one wall sign, now if you want to have one wall sign or two wall signs, you can have that, but those two totaled cannot exceed the maximum allowed. That gives everybody a little bit more flexibility. Additionally, we focused on building signs versus the freestanding signs. And that again, was trying to give a little bit more flexibility in how people wanted to use signage. So building signs, awning signs, or so wall signs, awning signs, projecting signs, all of those that are attached to the building, other than window signs, are considered a building sign. And each tenant or each building owner can figure out how best to create the package they want for signage, again, without going over the one square foot per lineal foot. With regards to window signs, we had some lengthy discussions about that. Again, we have this type of illustration that shows what we're looking at when we talk about windows. We have increased the amount of ratio from 25% to 33%. Many communities allow more than that. Some, particularly in like historic areas, only allow less and we had some discussions back and forth with the stakeholders and arrived at 33%. On the permanent sign allowances, revised this again to focus, the ground signs are the primary sign for a lot and no longer includes driveway or drive-through facility signs. Those are all separated out. So hopefully that's going to greatly reduce the amount of variances you are seeing with regards to the number of ground signs. There is, again, to reiterate, no change in the height, the maximum height or sign areas allowed for those freestanding signs. As I mentioned, we have allowed for the electronic message centers or the digital signs with a significant set of restrictions. One, up to 50% of the ground sign, so not for any other types of signs. It's not allowed in any historic districts or on landmarks. The message can only change once every 24 hours and it's one color on a black or dark background, so something along this lines. There was a significant amount of discussion on this with communities, you know, or the stakeholders wanting some form of digital signage, but right now it's not allowed. And so there was this discussion to start off and see how this will look and then perhaps in the future, come back and evaluate if changes should be made to this. On the permanent sign allowance, again, we added provisions. So now there is a provision that allows for a drive-through facility sign. It's no longer counted towards a ground sign allowance. It can be digital. If it's attached to the building, then it is calculated as part of a building, the building signs versus if it's kind of standalone near the vehicle stacking lanes. It's not just for restaurants, so it's not about, you know, the message again. It's for any, any use that has a drive-through. So you might have a bank that wants to use some kind of drive-through facility sign. Drive-through signs, which many, you know, might see as reference to directional signs and they're typically the small little signs that, that are close to intersection saying enter, exit, drive-through, or various kind of directional information. We call them drive-through signs. They, again, not counted towards a ground sign allowance. They are only going to be allowed in interests of limited access driveway where you may have some trouble with maneuverability anyways and directionals. They are often in directional in nature, although because we have gone content neutral, we don't reference what the message has to be. So it could be a logo, it could be enter, exit, it could be a number of messages, but again, they are very small. Temporary signs allowance, we focused on the type over the message. The, we made it very clear that the only sign, the temporary signs that are allowed are banners, which have to be attached to the building or some kind of structure, a yard sign and the window signs and the temporary window signs of that sort. So those are the, you know, this, by the, by the nature of the language we use, things like the flutter flags or the balloon signs would not be allowed under the new code and that's some of the clarification we went through. As I mentioned earlier, we did maintain a distinction between commercial and non-commercial messaging. With the non-commercial message, this is meant to meet the basic standards of location, but there's not a size or scale. It's any sign that wouldn't rise to the need of a building permit, a building permit. So they're going to be smaller scaled. Otherwise, we've kind of generally stayed hands-off on those. Again, it's, it's, it's trying to assure everybody's got free speech and we can't even regulate it really based on timing around elections because non-commercial speech is something we enjoy year-round. It's not just about political speech. When it comes to commercial messaging, and that's any commercial speech, whether it's real estate or construction or now hiring, we do have provisions for that, but they are, there are more limitations, there are time limits, and there are size limitations. And then in addition to that, we have some additional signage where some, a commercial use could have a little bit larger sign, but that is only allowed twice a year, 30 days per occurrence. So if you had some kind of special event where you wanted a temporary sign, a larger temporary sign for a certain amount of time, you could still do that. Additionally, we've added a provision that if there's a new business comes in and they have an existing sign from the previous business, that they can get a temporary sign, a banner type, to cover that pre-existing sign for a period of up to 60 days while they get the new sign in place. As you know, the other element of this is the Chapter 1115. We have completely updated all the definitions to make sure that the terms that we use in the updated code are all defined. Every type of sign that's allowed or referenced in there, we've defined. And so that is why we have proposed the changes in definitions in the second chapter. And with that, I am available for questions from the public.
Thank you very much for that presentation. If you could please, Wendy, if you could now unshare your screen, that would be helpful for myself and the clerk then to identify people who would like to comment. Thank you so much. Clerk Maserolo, did anyone reach out to the council office prior to the meeting this evening to express any comments?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving on to our audience participation, thank you for joining our hearing tonight. At this time, council will hear comments from the public. Please remember to state your name and your address for our clerk. And if you live in a city other than North Olmsted, it said, please state the name of the city you are from. Everyone will have up to five minutes to comment. We will start with those who have notified us via chat. Clerk Maserolo, has anyone notified you via the chat feature that they would like to comment?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Council will now open it up to hear from anyone else. If you are attending via your computer and have your video on, if you could please raise your hand and state your name and address after you unmute yourself, then you can begin your comments once I acknowledge you. Clerk Maserolo, yes? Clerk Maserolo, I'm sorry, we're not able to hear you. That's okay.
Sorry, Brian actually texted me, or chatted right at the same time that you asked that. So Brian would like to comment.
Okay, wonderful. Brian, if you could please unmute yourself, state your name and address and begin your comments, please.
Brian Warren, W-A-R-R-E-N for the last name. I live in Lakewood, but I am the vice president for the Olmsted Unitarian Universalist Church that is at 5050 Porter Road in North Olmsted. I am speaking on the section, I believe it was point 12 of the ordinance, 1163.12, having to do with the neon signs. And the part of it says that in, that no need, LED signs, I apologize, LED, not neon, electronic, are to be allowed in the historic district or on historic structures, in one of the lines of it. And there is only, very few actual businesses that are affected by this. And that historic district is the only one on the map that has a map for it. And the marathon station, the pinball shop, and the CVS are commercial businesses that are on the map indicated in the historic district. Plus, Springvale's entrance at Canterbury and the school are also in there. Kind of businesses, open to the public. Or the ones in the historic district that would possibly want to have signs. The marathon station, by the way, already does have LED for its price. And of the 14 churches in the city, we would be the only one with a historic designation that would not be allowed to have a message sign, LED message sign, because of that historic nature. And we are on a somewhat major road here, Porter Road. And so we feel that is hampering us in a bit of a disadvantage, if you will. And all churches, no matter their denomination, are struggling for attendance and getting people's attention and getting their message out. It is also a, our current sign with the changeable letters is quite difficult to do sometimes in the wind and in the wintertime and the cold and finding someone each week to go and volunteer to go change it. So it's more of a change of technology, if you will, than it is trying to get something out there big and flashy and all that stuff. It's more of a convenience to the, to our abilities that we are having, having to struggle to do. So I think that, that line on there only affects such few businesses that it's prohibitive and we're not in that district. We're an isolated, separate historic structure. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I see Mr. Burns. If you would like to go ahead with your comments after your name and address, please.
Jim Burns, Chamber of Commerce. 30119 Lorraine Road. I was a member of the, the study group that took part in putting together this ordinance and whatnot. And I did raise this particular issue with the planning director during the course of the thing. And she gave me her take on what, why this particular church should not be exempted from this historic district thing because it is a historic site. And I brought up the idea, and sometime in the future, there may be other places that are not in a historic district but are declared a historic property that might also have this problem. And if, if Kim would be so nice to elaborate on what she said, I'll turn the floor over to her.
Director Lieber?
Thank you. The committee had discussed this issue of digital signage and areas where it may or may not be appropriate in the community. And the historic district and landmark properties was specifically an area that was thought to not be appropriate due to the age of the structures that typically are made into city landmarks. Some of the criteria that's included in our, in our codes and ordinances establishes an age criteria, for example. So the digital sign face did not exist at the time these historic structures were originally constructed. And part of, you know, our codes and ordinances, when we look at what landmarks looks for in terms of historic compatibility, talks about the materials, talks about the style and overall compatibility. So when you're looking at structures from the 1800s or early 1900s, the digital signage just seems fundamentally at odds with, with those properties. If they've risen to the level of being landmarked, they're particularly recognized as having a special city significance to our culture and our history. And also, you know, rules that we set today, they're not just for existing structures, but they move into the future so that, you know, if there are other structures designated in the future as landmarks, they would fall under and have those same restrictions imposed. So I just see the potential watering down that if, if landmark properties were exempted, next could be the historic district. And I was imagining, you know, Butter Nut Ridge Historic District that where any number of potential digital signs could be introduced and what that would do to that district. I think it would have a disruptive effect. It wouldn't be harmonious. So I think that, you know, landmark properties and historic district properties are very much tied together in terms of importance, historic significance to the city. So therefore, I would recommend not parsing out landmark properties as treated separately from historic district properties in the matter of this particular sign restriction. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Burns, did you have any additional comments that you wanted to share this evening?
No, she covered it pretty well. But again, I'm worried about sometime in the future, if a property, it might even be a commercial property, where that particular lot would be designated historic, but they would not be permitted to use the digital signing, which they may or may not desire. But it's, it's, you're taking, I understand historic districts, and when you're in a historic district, I understand the rules and, and all that stuff. But when you're talking about individual properties, you never know where they're going to be located at sometime in the future, whatever. For example, would you allow a digital sign down at, at the village down there on Cedar Point Road, the Historical Society, and stuff like that? So it's just that sometime in the future, it may become a problem if a commercial property located somewhere, be it on Lorraine Road or whatever, is decided, that building's decided to be a historic building or something, and all of a sudden, it can't have a digital sign.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Is there anyone else who would like to comment this evening? If, council will now hear if there's anyone who is on the phone and you have called into the meeting. If you could please unmute your phone, identify your name and address, and start your comments. Clerk Messerolo. Sorry, clerk, you gotta unmute again.
All right, I don't, I believe Councilman Schuman had his hand raised, I just wanted to point that out.
Councilman Schuman, I'm sorry, I missed you. Please go ahead with your comment.
That's okay. I just, just so people understand, the Landmarks Commission uses, we don't, we didn't exactly write our own rules. What we do is use rules that are set up by the Department of the Interior. And they're very strict about materials and styles and, although we have our own guidelines, when you're dealing with historic properties, it's important to maintain that same look as, and the same materials that you would have when the property was, was built, or when the, when the property of historic significance was, was first constructed. So that's where that comes from. It doesn't, it's not an arbitrary thing that we just came up with, just for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any, Councilman Limbert?
Yeah, I was going to save this for the committee meeting, thank you, Madam President. But Ms. Lieber, does those requirements from the Interior also require no LED signage for ground, ground signs that aren't part of the structure?
Madam President, to the Councilman's question, the standards, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation are broad guidelines. They create standards like materials shall be compatible with the original materials of the structure. They don't get into the minutia of like a specific instance, like a digital sign for a historic property. And that's where our design guidelines provided a little bit of, of more detailed guidance. But, so you won't find anything in the Secretary of Interior Standards that will specifically talk about sign types or that, that type of detail, level of detail. It's guidelines when considering rehab, new addition, construction, or infill in historic districts or of landmark properties.
Seeing no other public comments or questions, we'd like to thank Director Lieber, Wendy Muller, all of the people who took part of, of the committee, and all the time and effort that was put into, into this. And seeing no other comments, and with our agenda being completed, and there being no further business to come before council, this public hearing of September 8th, 2020 is adjourned at 7:35 PM.